Okay, so we'll begin with Housing Authority. Madam Clerk, if we could call roll, please.
Commissioner Beard?
Here.
Commissioner Beckles?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Solario?
Here.
Vice Chair Tuha Nguyen?
Here.
Chair Cloughenstein?
Here.
And Commissioner Bowie is absent.
We'll start with oral communication. I don't have any pink cards, so we'll move on to consent items. Two A, receiving file of the Housing Authority's status report for September 2017, and Two B, receiving file minutes from the meeting held on September 26, 2017. Do I have a motion?
Move to motion and move to approve Two A and B.
Second?
Second.
Your iPads aren't working, are they?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote. Commissioner Beard?
Yes.
Commissioner Beckles?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Solario?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tuha Nguyen?
Yes.
And Chair Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Motion received. Eight yes votes.
Okay, I have a quick comment to make. Actually, it's a congratulations. I'd like to congratulate the Housing Authority staff on achieving 100% score on their recent Section 8 management assessment for fiscal year 2016-17. This perfect score designates the Housing Authority as a high-performing agency and confirms the program is operating effectively. The related notification letter from HUD will be available for the public to view online in this week's City Manager's Memo. Before we close, does anyone have any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and adjourn. The next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, November 28 at 5:30 here at the Community Meeting Center.
Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Tuha Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Here.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
And Mayor Jones?
Here. I'd like to ask Kingsley O'Carroll to lead us with the invocation, and then if I could ask the birthday boy? To collect the flag salute.
Another birthday boy?
All right, Heavenly Father, as we gather here to consider the issues before our community, we ask that you give us wisdom to not merely know what is right, but also the courage to do that which is right. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. Ready to begin?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, united, without borders, civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, so we don't have any spotlights?
No, we don't.
For presentations. So, we'll go straight into oral communications. I do have several cards. Can I first call upon the Charles and David duo to come forward?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the staff, and the council. Have you ever felt like something was wrong in your city, or in your county, or in a water district, or a school district, or any of the other special districts within the county, and you felt something should be done about it? Well, what can you do? Sit on your couch and brood? Or you can sit down and write a letter to the Orange County Grand Jury. Tell them you think there's a problem they need to look into, and that's what they will try to do. They can't promise they're gonna look into every situation that comes up, and they probably won't give you any response on what they find. But if they find something worthwhile and they investigate, later in the year, they will publish their report on that particular item. So it's out for public knowledge. And Dave Cassabo has served on two grand juries. He is now serving third time on the grand jury, and he's gonna tell you about the grand jury.
Oh, thank you Mitch. So my name is Dave Cassabo, and I am a member of the Orange County Grand Jury. Do you all know what the grand jury is? Any hands? No hands? Nobody knows? Okay. Well, I'll tell you what the grand jury is not. The grand jury is not jury duty, okay? The grand jury is an independent investigative entity. We're not beholden to the county because we don't work for the county. We don't work for the courts, but we are court officers. We investigate, or we have the ability, of course, to investigate any entity of the county or city governments. We can investigate the sheriff if we wanted to. We can investigate the Garden Grove City Council if it was necessary. We could investigate any agency, the Department of Social Services, the DA's office, which we have done before, and any city entity, the mayors, for example, or city councils. But that's half of what we do. The other half is criminal investigations. The grand jury does criminal investigations and indictments. Now, an indictment is a charging process. We don't determine if a person is guilty, innocent, or guilty. We send them upstairs to the jury for that. But the DA will bring us a case. We'll take a look at what he has. We have witnesses. We'll talk to the witnesses, whatever items they have of evidence, and we'll make a determination where there is enough evidence to send a person up to trial. So that's the second half. We do civil investigations, and we do criminal indictments. The grand jury being an independent society, so to speak, we're kinda secret. We don't tell anybody what we're doing. We know what we're doing, believe me, but we don't, we cannot tell anyone we're doing for life. We take an oath that for the rest of our lives, we cannot tell our spouse, we cannot tell our priest, our minister, what we did, what we saw, or what we voted for in the case of criminal indictments. But what I can tell you is this: we have a lot of fun in the grand jury. Have you ever heard of Unity, the Unity fiasco about five years ago? It was the largest fraud case in Orange County. $154 million from the federal government. The grand jury did that. How about red light cameras? Who's got a red light? Whoever? Did anybody get nabbed by a red light camera? I think it's like 400 bucks or so, okay? There were, I believe, six cities that had red light cameras. Now, there's only three. How about sexual harassment in DA's office? We did that. Everything's changed. We, how about the Jackie and Tom Hox case? When they had a yacht out here in Newport Beach, and two people conspired to steal their boat? They threw, tied him with an anchor and threw him over the side? The grand jury did that. How about animal control? Grand jury looked into the animal control, and now we have on a 10-acre plot a brand, well, it's not built yet, but it's a brand-new animal shelter. So we do things like that. We even watch autopsies. You like autopsies? Is that your thing? You can go and see any autopsy you want to. And if there's any ladies in here whose husband is retired, and they want him, get him out of the house, have him join the grand jury. You get paid. We determine what hours. We're working, I think, 23 hours a week at this time. We get a stipend. It's about 1,300 a month, depending on how much you travel, because we get travel pay at 53 and 1/2 cents a mile. So it's a fun thing to do. It's something that you could do to, for your community, for the County of Orange, and I encourage everyone, except maybe you guys, to think about grand jury. If you know anyone who might want to be on the grand jury, I think I have, we have some flyers here that...
I gave them to the clerk.
Clerk has got them. You even took mine? Okay, you took them all. So, thank you very much, and think about the grand jury.
If you're interested, you can call the city clerk's office. I have a phone number to contact the grand jury application process. It's well worthwhile, if you have the time and you're interested, apply for the grand jury. It's an experience you will never surpass. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Nguyen?
Hello, my name is Andrew Nguyen, and I'm here for Boy Scouts, Troop 1454. And I'm 13 years old, and I'm here today to thank you, City Council members, for what you have done for the city. I grew up, I think, most of my life in Garden Grove, and I've noticed that it's a very safe and good place to just like be in in general. And I've heard that a lot of people, I mean, I've heard that most people that come to you guys are like, want that, like, I want that, I want this, and I feel like you guys shouldn't be like receiving that type of, like, people shouldn't be doing that to you because you guys do do a lot for the city, and I feel like you guys should be appreciated more for that. And I'm up here saying thank you because, like I said, I've grown most of my life in Garden Grove, and I like, I just like being here in general, like, just the city is awesome, and I just wanna thank you guys for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. I'm here to give you some more STRs, and I would like to have you noted these. There is 11181 Palm Vista, 11882 Morgan, 11591 Robert, 11422 on Frederick. I know these aren't, I have, I don't know, I just heard that we can now go to code enforcement and turn these in, so I wasn't aware of that, so now I know I can turn these numbers into them. And also, on another note, I would just like to find out if the Fire and Safety has a program to give out smoke detectors to every Garden Grove homeowner. I know Anaheim did it, and it worked really well, and it's, if they would donate them for free, and then they go ahead and they install them with the batteries, and it's a good program. I mean, some of the older people who do not have them, it would be really great for them to get them, but every homeowner should be offered them. But that's a program that Anaheim did this last year, and we got them. So I would like, you know, to see if Garden Grove could do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that is all we have in terms of oral communications, so we will move on and recess and conduct successor agency.
Actually, you do have an item. You have written communication?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Two A, we do. Consideration requests from Action Civics LA to waive fees for Project Soapbox competition.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The Action Civics LA organization is requesting that the City Council waive the cosponsorship policy regarding weekend use of a city facility to conduct their third annual Orange County-wide Project Soapbox competition at the Community Meeting Center on Sunday, December 3, 2017. The competition is a culminating celebration where over 400 Orange County, excuse me, middle and high school students participate in Project Soapbox to identify the community-based issues, conduct research, and address issues in front of their peers and community leaders. The cost to waive, well, let me go back, participating schools from Garden Grove Unified School District include Pacifica High School, Doig Intermediate, and Los Amigos High School. Sorry about that. My allergies are bad today. The cost to waive the Community Meeting Center room rental fees is $1,190 for three-hour time slot. The organization would still be required to pay the cost of setup fees and staff time. This event does not conflict with any scheduled or pre-scheduled events, and therefore will not result in any lost revenue to the city. It is recommended that City Council consider the request from the Action Civics LA. That concludes my report, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Any comments? Can anybody? I have a very quick comment. I've been, I've been to a few of these events for the Action Civics LA. It's a very worthwhile group, and I say that because their motto is "Democracy is a verb." I just love that motto because it really encourages young people to get involved. Its emphasis is community problem solving, teaches young people civic knowledge and leadership skills, and is also, while transferring their attitudes about transitioning or transferring their attitudes about political participation. So my experience has always been good with that group, and it's very worthwhile. I'm so glad the city is considering sponsorship of this event, and it's a big competition. It's so worthwhile, so I'm speaking in favor of this motion. In fact, I'd like to make the motion to approve this item.
I'll second it.
Any other comments? Call to vote.
Seven yes votes.
Okay, so we will now recess and conduct successor agency business. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Tuha Nguyen?
Here.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here. Consent items, we just have receiving file of the minutes from the last meeting and approval of the warrants. Do I have a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Call to vote?
Seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn to sanitary district. With that, I'd like to call a roll.
Moving way too fast.
Don't need to skip that.
Member Bowie?
Yeah.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Member Tuha Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President O'Neil?
Here.
And President Beard?
Here. Okay, we've covered oral communications, consent items, Two A. Move it, Two A through Two D. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Yeah, second that.
Motion second, call for the vote. Just come up.
Member Bowie?
Oh, yeah.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from members? Seeing none, we will be adjourned to Tuesday, November 28, 2017. Right to council. Thank you. That brings us back to item three, consent items. Items Three A through Three J. Is there anyone who would like to pull an item? I would actually like to pull Three G, just for a minute, but I'll move the balance.
Second.
Call to vote.
Seven yes votes.
Thanks. Sorry, Lee and Chris, you guys don't really need to come in here. I just wanted to monologue for a second. I saw you guys scurry in, but...
If you have questions.
Yeah, no, no, you're welcome, you're welcome to hang out for a second. But I just wanted to pull this one just a sec, just to say, I'm excited to see this moving forward. So this is a BCIP bicycle corridor improvement project cooperative agreement together with OCTA. It involves grant funding to the tune of 1.265 million that we can apply towards building almost 15 miles worth of, or improving almost 15 miles worth of bikeway paths around town. So just wanted to pull it and say, this is awesome. I love seeing these things pop up on our agenda. I love seeing follow-through with what we had declared back at our retreat as being a City Council initiative to promote active transportation improvements throughout the city, make the city more connected through bicycle and pedestrian paths, help kids get back and forth to school safer, and all these things that go with it. So, great job, and thank you guys, and then especially, I don't know if she's back yet, but thank you, Erin Webb.
She's still in Paris.
She's still in Paris, okay. Good for her. I'll go over there, personally thank her for her tireless efforts in this space and for all she's done to keep this rolling forward, so to speak. Yeah, so thanks. And with that, I'd like to move it. Call to vote.
Okay, it's being stubborn. Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call. Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuha Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Motion received.
Seven yes votes.
Okay, it's being stubborn.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call. Councilmember Beard?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuha Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Cloughenstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, if I can also just add, I know it's not part of this particular item, but when it comes around for comments at the end, I'm going to talk just very briefly about the Caltrans Sustainable Planning Grant that the staff just submitted this week. A little Cliff Notes on that at the end of the meeting, but great work with them, both on this grant and the other one that I'll talk about later on.
Good.
So, thanks to the team on that.
Yeah, good stuff. Okay, so that concludes consent items. Moves on to item four, public hearings. We only have one, item Four A. Adoption of resolution approving agreement with Garden Grove Automobile, Inc. for opening and operating a Kia dealership at 13731 Harbor Boulevard, Garden Grove.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is a resolution approving an agreement regarding opening, operating, and other covenants between the City of Garden Grove and Garden Grove Automotive, Inc., also known as Garden Grove Kia. Garden Grove Kia is currently located at 10081 Garden Grove Boulevard and has operated under lease agreement since 2009. The dealership is required to relocate due to the impending phase to construction of Brooker's Place. The owners of Garden Grove Kia, Garden Grove Automotive, are looking to transfer their Kia dealership as an alternate site within the city limits and have requested economic assistance. Historically, Garden Grove Kia has generated between $300,000 and $445,000 annually in sales tax revenue to the city over the last four fiscal years. The proposed site is approximately 2.33 acres, currently contains a small-use car lot, and is located at 13731 Harbor Boulevard, just south of the 22 freeway. The proposed site is significantly smaller than the current location, which is seven acres. The proposal includes, but is not limited to, renovation of the existing site, maintaining 40 full-time equivalent jobs, and opening and operating a Kia dealership for no less than 25 years. Further requirements of California Government Code, Section 53083, an economic development subsidy report has been prepared and included in your staff report. The report details the proposed economic development subsidy as follows. One, it establishes a base year amount of $150,000 in which all sales tax revenue is retained by the city. Two, the proposed subsidy provides for Garden Grove Automotive to receive annual payments in an amount equivalent to 35% of the annual sales tax revenue above the $150,000 base. Three, the agreement provides for the retention of Garden Grove Kia in the city for 25 years via the operating covenant. Four, assistance would be for the first 20 years, commencing when the Garden Grove Kia opens for business. And five, total assistance shall not exceed $2.5 million. On this screen, you can see an illustration of how sales tax sharing formula works based on sales tax revenue of $300,000. The city would retain $150,000 base. The remaining $150,000 would be shared with 35%, or 52,500 going to Kia, and 65%, or 97,500 going to the city. This would result in proposed city revenue of $247,000. At this time, it is recommended City Council conduct a public hearing, approve the attached resolution, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Representatives from Garden Grove Automotive along with city staff is available to answer any questions. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
Couple of question. It is mentioned that it is estimated the year one would, tax revenue to the city would be $119,000 approximately?
Correct.
Do we know the number of sale tax to the city for the last few years?
So for the last few years, for the last four years, the annual sales tax revenue of Kia dealership has been between $300,000 and $445,000.
So why is it that in the next 10 years, we expect the sale tax net of only $119,000 to $182,000, which is substantial less than what they are, you know, paying right now?
So that's considered new net revenue? So there's an existing dealership there, used car dealership. So we're deducting the amount that that existing dealership generates? So it's just new net revenue?
I see, I see.
So you would be losing the existing auto dealer that is there?
I see. Now, so in years one, the difference in tax net revenue to the city would be $119,000. Now, when we say the city retained $150,000, is that based on this, or is that based on the actual sale tax that they generate?
From the actual, if they generate 400,000, straight off the bat, we get 150,000. And then the difference is what's shared.
I see. So going into years one, we should not, we should not use this table as the, as the tax revenue to the city. It should be the actual number, which is somewhere between maybe $300,000 for the last, if we use the number from the last four years?
Well, we're getting what Kia is gonna be making of new sales tax, but we're also losing the existing dealership that's there.
So when we say the city, you know, reserved the $150,000, I'm not sure if I understand that correctly, so help me out here. When we say, in the formula... that correctly, so help me out here. When we say, in the formula, that the city retained $150,000 sale tax, so anything above that, that will be 35%. Now, what number do we base on? On the subsidy net, or on the real net? That I don't understand.
Good evening, Mayor Potem. I do want to assist in clarifying your question. It is the total aggregate sales tax revenue generated by the Garden Grove Kia dealership. So that would be the first clarification. It's the total that's generated. In the illustration that we provided two slides ago, it was just an example of how the formula would work. And in the attached report, it's calculating the net new. So, I know there's several numbers to really work from, but to answer your question, how this formula will work is at the point of sale, from when the new dealership opens, it would be the total revenue generated from that. So, from that point, assuming, your assumption, if they generated $300,000 the first year, $150,000 would be retained by the city first, and then we would apply the formula of the 35%, which would ultimately be dispersed to the auto dealer. And just to add for clarification, if they do not exceed the 150 base year threshold, no dispersment would be made?
I think I understand that now. It was just not clear to us during the agenda review last Monday, when we asked staff. And we was thinking that, based on the table on page number four of the report, years one, the sale tax net of subsidy to the city is $119,000, all the way to years number five is $154,000. So when we look at this report, it was misleading because we thought, okay, so the first 10 years, they probably, you know, we got almost nothing of the sale tax sharing, right, the 35%, but that's not the case.
No.
Because this is the, this is amount that had been subtracted from the existing tax revenue from the old dealership.
Correct, correct.
So, if Hyundai is doing about $300,000 for the last four years, on the average, we would expect them to share, if they keep the same amount, then we would expect them to share 35% of about $130,000, right? Not based on this table on page four. This table on page four is misleading, you know, to us, when we apply the formula. Is that correct? So, every year, if we assume that they keep the same $300,000 of tax revenue to the city, we would expect them to have 52,500 each year. Right? That's 35% of $150,000, if they are generating $300,000 sale tax.
So if you're looking at the table on page four that you're referencing?
Yes.
What this is saying is that we're projected, and I'll just, I mean, basically, it's written on the report, this is considered new net sales tax revenue. The dealership is estimated to be $119,100 in year one, projected to grow to $266,000 by year 20. Net sales tax revenues are defined as the annual tax revenues received by the city minus the existing tax revenues from the site, so whatever the site is currently making right now, and the subsidy paid to the developer. So the 35% that's gonna be paid to the developer.
So, hmm.
So let's say that the current site is making $100,000 to the city in revenue annually.
I think I'm still not clear, because at first I thought, you know, 30 seconds ago, I thought I understood, but now I'm not sure if I understood it correctly. So let tell me, I just want to know, years one, if they meet the estimate on this table, page number one, page number four. So, do I, do they get nothing in terms of the 35%, or they do? Because if we, if I use the number $119,000 here as a, you know, the net, net sale tax, then they are under the $130,000 quota, so therefore, we would not, they would not get any tax sharing from us. Is that correct or not?
No, just for clarification, the number on the chart illustrates our 65% that the city would receive above the $150,000.
I'm not sure if I heard that. Can you repeat that one more time?
Year one on the chart?
Uh huh.
Is the city's 65% of sales tax revenue above the $150,000.
Oh, I see, okay.
So if you add those two figures together, it's estimated that the city would receive. It would be 150 plus 119 is the total estimated revenue that the city would receive.
I see. Can you kindly show me what Hyundai would make? Because I would really like to see, you know, what I'm voting for. So, I'm seeing here what the city would get, but what is the number that the Hyundai, not Hyundai, the Kia would get?
If I may ask our, Mr. Harden, to maybe assist with answering that question, I think our calculation is based on numbers that was provided by Mr. Harden, and it is our best, based on their projected sales of the site and...
All right, thanks for having me. So I don't have the chart in front of me, but I can just work through some preliminary numbers as an example. And someone was talking about $400,000 worth of sales tax generated. So the way it works, of the $400,000, the first $150,000 goes directly to the city. And then you've got a balance of another $250,000. So, of the $250,000, the city gets 65%, which is 162.5. Okay, so the total number that the city receives is 150 base plus 162.5. Okay, that's 312,500, and the dealership would get the balance, which is 87.5. That's one-year example based on $400,000 of sales tax revenue generated.
So, in total, what is...
The other option would be to put another city, which is something we're trying to avoid.
Well, I'm not saying that we are not supporting it, so I'm just, I'm trying to understand what the number we are talking about, right? I'm not saying that we should or should not, you know, authorize this. I'm just trying to understand what the data is. So, the first year, we expect Kia to get about $87,000 in profit sharing. And the second year is probably something around that, you know, close to that. And then, after 20 years, how much are we...
There's a cap of $2.5 million total.
$2.5 million estimate.
Regardless of the term, no, it doesn't matter. There's a cap. So, that's the max it'll ever pay, is $2.5 million.
And can I ask staff to explain to us, the $2.5 million is that for, and the reason that we want to share that cost with Kia is for what?
It's the basis of the gap of land acquisition and potential improvements to the property.
So Kia is investing about $2.5 million to expand the site, make it, you know, better, nicer, so that we can sell more car, and then in selling more car, we might, you know, sale tax contribution more to the city. Is that what it is?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt, but that's correct. So, the facility right now is built in 1967, and has not undergone any major renovations since then. So we're gonna go through, in fact, I don't know if we have the elevations available or not, but we just, we've been working through them now with our architect, and our intent is to take that area which is, has room for opportunity to improve, and take it from its current state and make it cutting-edge into a flagship facility, which I think the timing's impeccable, because right across the street, they're building a brand-new hotel, right within view. And, you know, we're hoping to try to generate something and keep it going. Plus, the sales that we anticipate over what the existing dealer's doing is significant as well, probably, you know, five to six times annually. So, I think, but to answer your question, it's between $2.5 to $4 million, just for the facility renovation, estimated.
No more question?
Any other questions of staff? Then, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, no, thank you everybody.
You don't need to, just wanted to invite any of you guys.
Really appreciate it.
Okay. I don't have any cards, so is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing no other speakers, we'll close the public hearing. And maybe I'll open up and say some comments. You guys are welcome to chime in after, if you have others if you want to say. But this item comes about because their current location is in the path of what is gonna become the Brooker's Triangle project, Phase Two, Phase Three, whatever, as it expands out over there. So, the current location of this dealership necessarily has to go away. I know they've been rolling up their sleeves and working on finding other sites for the last couple of years. There's been a lot of interaction with the city, with Lisa's groups, Grambling, trying to just help however we could. I know it's been a cumbersome process, because it's not easy to find land, and it's not easy to find a suitable site. I think what they found is great. I think it's gonna be a better location there on Harbor Boulevard, and at the end of the day, this is gonna turn out to be wonderful. So I presume, and I hope that, sales will improve with a brand-new facility over there and in a better location, I believe. And I'm thrilled to see this dealership staying in town and not going to Santa Ana or anywhere else, because that's the options. And frankly, other cities would love to steal Kia away from us. I'm glad the Harden family is digging their heels in and staying here and being a part of Garden Grove, so I certainly appreciate that. In any city, you've got your sort of staple tax revenue generators, your hotels, your big-box retailers, and your car dealerships. So, lest we never forget where, kind of that hand that feeds when it comes to city sales tax revenue, whatever. So, we appreciate that we've got a strong and vibrant auto dealership community in town. We appreciate your commitment to stay here and be a part of it, to Harden, and I wholeheartedly support this effort going forward. Anybody else?
I would like to support this. I think it is good for the city, good for Kia, and it's good for the infrastructure. The price tax, $2.5 million, even though it's a big number, but I think the bottom liars, you know, this is the investment in the building, in the infrastructure, and will be, you know, bring the area of dealership in the Harbor Boulevard up to speed and more in line with the vision that we have for the hospitality industry. So I think it is a good investment. Every time we use taxpayer money, we need to be prudent and make sure that we use every dollar wisely. But I think it is a good investment. I would support it. With that, I make the motion to, you know, approve this, you know, item.
Yeah. Second for discussion, and then we've got a couple others who would like to speak. So, Kim?
I just want to share, since this dealership is going in my district, that, you know, as someone who's grown up in that area and had to walk down Harbor and see what I've seen, I think that this is a great project, because you're taking an area that's rundown, an existing facility that is extremely rundown, and you're renovating it, and you're investing in the street. You have other projects coming in, so I'm really hopeful that this is gonna definitely revitalize and change what Harbor has been known to be, not just for myself or for us up here, but also for the kids who are walking home from school and who have to be subject to the things that go on on that street. So, I'm really excited to see that happen on Harbor and some focus come to that street, finally.
I'm very excited for this project, and I would like to say thank you to this staff. I think you guys worked very hard on this making arrangement. I hate to see, I'm gonna miss Kia in my district, but I think this is a good move for all of you. Definitely gonna add a little bit to the Harbor corridor, so...
It's still the money to us all.
But you're still part of the Garden Grove family, so, anyway, thank you.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to thank the Harden family. I think it was more than the economic reasons that they stayed in Garden Grove, so I really appreciate that with their longtime involvement here. And just for the public's knowledge, you know, these kind of deals are done every day with revenue sharing and a public-private relationship. You have to entice these businesses to stay in your city or help them develop. So, this isn't out of the normal at all. In fact, I think the Harden family made a decision that they were gonna stay in Garden Grove, and that's why they're here. So, thank you.
Call the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Congratulations. Okay, items for consideration, item five A.
Item five A is an approval of a Selective Traffic Enforcement Program grant agreement with the State of California Office of Traffic Safety to implement traffic safety checkpoints. And the captain is here to give his report.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here this evening to obtain City Council approval to participate in an approved grant agreement for the 2017 and 2018 Traffic Safety Grant Program through the California Office of Traffic Safety, or OTS, for implementing DUI and CDL checkpoints and selective traffic enforcement operations. The California Office of Traffic Safety awards grants to local law enforcement agencies. These one-year grants begin October 1 of 2017 and end September 30 of 2018. The Garden Grove Police Department has applied for and has received similar grants dating back to 1996. The city is eligible to receive $286,000 in federal funds to implement DUI and CDL checkpoints and selective traffic enforcement operations. This year's grant funding focuses on the reduction of persons killed and injured in alcohol-involved crashes by using best-practice strategies. These strategies include driving under the influence and driver's license checkpoints, DUI saturation patrols, bicycle and pedestrian enforcement, distracted driver enforcement, and a hot sheet program, and traffic educational presentations. There is no impact to the general fund, and the total amount for the 2017-2018 grant will be $286,000. It is recommended that City Council authorize participation in the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, accept the Office of Traffic Safety grant funds in the amount of $286,000, and authorize the city manager to execute the grant agreement on behalf of the city and allocate these grant monies to fund selective traffic enforcement operations. That concludes my presentation, and I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, comments or a motion?
Go for it.
Yeah, just a quick comment. I mean, this is a huge thing for us. That's a large sum of money to help with checkpoints and all kinds of public safety. So, that's huge for the grants that we have to go after and get, and I think it's just a great thing.
Thank you. Call the vote?
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, which brings us to matters. Any matters from council members?
Okay, well, I just want to wish everyone a happy Halloween. It's coming a week from today, so be safe, be careful out there. I want to wish my wife a happy birthday. She just had a birthday this last Saturday. So Sheriff, if you're watching, happy birthday again. So, Sheriff, if you're watching, happy birthday again. I also want to make a comment about, we have a budget committee going on right now. So, we have a meeting tomorrow, and we're going to be going over, I think, what do we... Or review critical needs. We have some discussions. The city manager may want to add something to this, but we're moving forward, looking at data, we're looking at information, so that's ongoing. We're providing that information to the council members. I think we'll have a report coming up in a short time, a month or so, to let you know where we are. I just want to make you aware of that. So, also too, I received some correspondence, and maybe all of us did, on the community action partnership. I only want to mention this because they have an OC Food Bank there, and it's a very worthwhile organization. It's been around for a very long time. If anybody out there is looking for a volunteer experience, wants to get involved, this is certainly the nonprofit to get involved with. It helps needy, it collects food, but it also has a packing distribution center where people can volunteer. And there's a lot of students out there who get credit for it, but it's a rewarding experience if you want to volunteer. So, you do have to call them up. They're listed on the Internet. So, it's community action partnership. I just want to make that announcement. I plan to go on the event that they're having on November 18, around Thanksgiving time. They're located on Monarch Street, which is West Garden Grove. And the only other thing I'd like to bring up is, agenda item for possibly for next council meeting, I've had some citizens come to me, ask me questions about recycling and people basically scavenging, coming into their containers and such. So, I'd like, maybe it's an actual item, so I'll make a motion to put this on the agenda. Theft, I'll call it theft of recycled materials. Let's call it that. So, we can at least get information out there, we can all discuss it, find out what's going on. I'm pretty sure if you haven't, you will receive constituent complaints about people getting into containers. And we can just talk about what's involved, enforcement, what we can do. Maybe we could look at more enforcement if we need to. So, with the motion being made, I wanted to put that on the agenda for our next council meeting, if that gives staff enough time. Do you believe you'll have some information available?
Councilman, yes, we can do that.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be an in-depth report, just kind of like what we have in the books, the ordinances.
Informational report to the council.
Yeah, if you have the time to do it.
Yep.
So, that's my motion.
Does that need to be a motion? Or can you take a direction?
If we take action on it, it has to be an actual item?
If you want to discuss it and give staff direction, as a result of that discussion, yeah, you should.
Okay. I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second that, then called to vote?
Okay. Seven yes votes.
That's it. Thank you.
John?
Thank you very much, Mr. Beard. Here, you have a birthday coming up too, so happy birthday to you and your wife. That's great. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention that we hear every day from constituents and our residents. We are working on economic development. As Mr. Beard said, there's a... Three of us are on a panel to budget subcommittee. We're working on things like balancing the budget, increasing public safety, police officers, traffic and code enforcement for building codes and traffic. Parking issues are a big deal. We're all aware of these things, we're working on them, STRs, homelessness, affordable housing. We're doing all these things at the same time. So, don't, you know, if you ever have any questions about that, feel free to contact our office. But public safety, number one, and we're working on all these things. Just want to let you know we're working on it. Thank you.
Thank you. To her.
Happy birthday to council member Beard and Mrs. Beard. Happy Halloween to everybody. Be safe, especially all the... Be with your children when they go out to a treat. And, as I have.
I want to wish a happy belated birthday to Mama Beard and to Lisa Kim, hopefully she's still here, and happy early birthday to council member Beard. And share some exciting news. The Buena Clinton Youth and Family Center is hosting a Dia de los Muertos, or Day of the Dead, event this Thursday, October 26, from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. at 12661 Sun Sleet Avenue. The event will feature altars to honor loved ones, a small resource fair, and interactive activities for children and families. There will also be... Those activities will include sugar school decorating, calavara face painting by TNT, photo booth music, and raffles. So, I hope to see some of you out there on Thursday.
Happy birthday, council member Chris Beard. As your vector control trustee for Garden Grove, I have a few announcements to make. First of all, obviously with the heat, our mosquito alert really is still high. Obviously, there are now day-biting mosquitoes. If you get bit by a day-biting mosquito, this is a mosquito, A.D.'s egypti that can carry the West Nile virus. So, you need to make sure you call vector control and report those mosquitoes to the district. They can come out, they can survey your property, they can help you find areas, or maybe there are standing water that you weren't aware of. So, it's definitely important to be aware of that. And again, as we are still battling the heat, mosquitoes are breeding, and it is still an active mosquito season, so make sure you're dumping and draining your standing water. It sounds very remedial and very simple, but it works, and it'll keep your neighborhood and yourself safe. Thank you.
Just want to say happy birthday, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Beard.
And also happy birthday to your wife.
Thank you.
I'd like to defer to city manager, and then I'll close up with just a couple of quick comments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of things. I know we've had some comments about short-term rentals, and I just wanted to remind everybody we're still working towards a discussion on short-term rentals this second council meeting in November. So, we're working on our report, and during that meeting, we'll have it agendized to discuss that. Apologies to Mayor Pro Tem Bowie. On the Kia dealership, he's correct. We didn't do a very good job of explaining it to you in the agenda review, so you are correct on that. So, we'll do a better job next time. I did want to also mention, Councilman Beard mentioned the budget subcommittee. We're going to be going through each department by department, talking about what some of the impacts to them and their budgets will be over the next year and a half, and reviewing that with the budget subcommittee, getting their input. We're going to start out with my office right out of the gate, talking about what the implications could be. So, we'll do that tomorrow. And then at some point, we'll be presenting all of that, you know, some of our findings to the full council about what we're learning, and certainly get input from the council about that. And then finally, as I mentioned earlier, I did want to just mention that besides the other great work that our planning staff talked about earlier, I did want to let council know that on the 20th, we did get submitted our Caltrans Sustainable Planning Grant. That's for $400,000, and it's to assist with our active downtown plan to identify needs and opportunities to create a more vibrant, walkable downtown, making it more attractive to businesses, inviting to residents, part of our Reimagine Project. So, that grant has been applied for and will hope to receive funding from Caltrans. It will be to help improve safety and comfort for pedestrians, increasing connectivity along some of our bikeway spokes that we're working on with our bike program, having some multi-use paths to the OC Streetcar, and exploring emerging mobility tools for downtown, including micro-transit, bike-share, ride-sharing, and other innovative programs. So, we'll brief the council if we are successful in receiving some grant money for that. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, two things. One is, as soon as we adjourn the meeting, I'd like to invite everyone over to the founders' room?
Constitution room.
Constitution room, to enjoy some birthday cake on behalf of council member Beard's upcoming birthday. So, we do have cake. We saved it for the end since it was a short meeting. And then I would like to close tonight's meeting in honor of Tony LaLama. Tony LaLama was a Garden Grove local icon who passed away in his home on October 10. He was a well-known Garden Grove business owner. The tailor shop, B&amp;C Italian Tailors and Clotheers near Brookhurst and Chapman was not just a place to make a living, but it was a calling for Tony. He was my personal tailor for a number of years, and I knew a whole lot of people around town that he serviced for many years over there. Many of those who knew Tony described him as a simple man with a formal style and an artist when it came to repairing and altering clothes. Since 1962, he made suits, rented tuxedos, and altered prom dresses in Garden Grove. Tony custom-fit the eye-catching red coats worn by members of the Garden Grove Elks Lodge and the blue blazers worn by Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce ambassadors. Tony's work ethic, dedication to service, and attention to detail made him a custom-fit for the city and community of Garden Grove. And he made a lasting impression on his clients and the Garden Grove business community. Tony is survived by his wife, Billie Jean, and children, Angela, Mark, Renee, and Larry. We send our deepest and most heartfelt condolences to his family during this time.